I'll call the meeting to order, you read the roll call.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Beazel?
Here.
Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright. Everybody received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
There was one small amendment that I would, on page two, under the sign rec, we're just missing a word or something, the sign is being reviewed and stapled, I guess the sign regulations are being reviewed?
I see it, yeah, sign regulations are...
So that would be out.
Awesome, good catch. Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve as amended.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Okay, this is the time in the meeting when we ask if anybody in the audience would like to address counsel on any issue. If you would like to, step to the microphone and state your name and address and tell us what you'd like. If not, moving right along, at this point in the meeting, I would like to make an announcement about our city administrative position. As you all know, Don Martin retired at the end of August, and we went through a process of doing, getting resumes, doing interviews, had a great committee help me out doing that. And it's interesting because, I was, I guess it was early in September, I went in and I had to sit down with Ron and talk to him, and you know, Ron's been with the city for a long time. And he said, "Yeah, I'll probably be here another three years, maybe five, the outside." Said, "Okay," so we gave some serious consideration, we went through the process, we had a lot of good resumes in. A lot of the folks were very talented and had a lot of background, but they were also in a similar position of Ron, where they'd been in the system so long that they may not stay, you know, they could retire basically at any time. We had, we narrowed it down to about seven or eight and went through an interview process and came up with some good candidates in that process, and the last interviewee was Ron. And he came into the room and I haven't seen so much enthusiasm in a human being in my life. He was very excited about the job and committed to eight years with the city, rather than the three to five, which was the original thing, is very excited about the future of the city and what, what he can do for the city, and with his, with his experience and background and tenure with the city, made the decision to give it to somebody else. No, I'm kidding, to give it to Ron. So Ron, congratulations, you are new city administrator.
Actually, Mayor, to make it official, I'll motion to adopt an initial order.
Okay.
Agreeing with your decision.
Awesome, that sounds great, is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Now it's official. Would you like to say anything?
Certainly, you know me, I'm not a loss for words, ever, so, I appreciate all the time that the mayor put in, the committee, I really do. You know, a long time ago, it's hard for me to sit and reflect that long, I walked in the halls downstairs in 1985 as a co-op student, saw an opportunity to work for the city of Fort Thomas, and Dave Whitaker interviewed me in the same office that I'm in now and offered me a position, and it just felt right, it just felt like something excited me about that, and it's not something that I really kind of anticipated going into college that I would work in public administration. But I took the job and have never regretted it. You know, I've been with the city for thirty years, been in different positions, had great opportunities, have worked with great people, a lot of people have come and gone, I'm kind of the tenured employee at this point. Also, maybe by age, so I've thought soon, which is scary, but, you know, when Don was leaving, we had a lot of discussion, I was contemplating, you know, my future long-term, you know, I, as you mentioned, I had opportunities to consider retiring out of the system, really feel like I have something to offer the city, I really feel like there's things that we haven't accomplished that I've been a part of, that I would like to see through. Our initial discussion was, you know, I'm still weighing those things. I was named interim, I spent some time doing that, and you know what? It all came to me very quickly, I had that defining moment, I was alone in the car driving along, and it's like, this, this is what I want, this really works for me, and it still feels right, it still feels right to be here, it feels great to have an opportunity like this, I look forward to working with this council, the mayor, the citizens, there's so many things that we've accomplished over time, had great manners here, working with Jeff Early, one and Don, my predecessors, and I've always appreciated what they've done for me, and I hope I can do that for others before I get out of here in eight years or so. But, you know, you never know what the future holds, but I really feel confident that this is where I want to be and finish my career, so I appreciate the opportunities and, and the trust that you all put in me, so, I want to thank all of you, and I can't wait to get to work tomorrow, so. I've been waiting for the day to share this, some, some of these folks have found out through the grapevine, and, you know, it's been hard to hold it as a secret for me, because I'm very excited about where I'm going with this, and so, I'm, I'm hopeful that tomorrow just allows me to sing it from the rooftops and just go to work, roll up the sleeves and be what it is, so, I thank you.
Well, you, you deserve it, it's, it was a heck of a process, and this whole grapevine thing, gee whiz, trying to keep something confidential in the city of Fort Thomas is a little bit tough, but, yeah, your enthusiasm for the job is, is unmatched, and I'm just excited about, I am more, honestly, I am more excited about this position now, with you at the helm, because I think there's a lot of good things we can do for the city. We've, we've come a long way with the city, just in, you know, the time you've been here and the short time that I've been involved with the city, we've done some great things with input from citizens and, and, you know, the center of town and, and Midway District and the parks and the fort, the, all that stuff is just, and we get wonderful feedback from citizens all the time, and I'm excited about what our next step can be, so.
I appreciate that, and again, I, I'll share one story, of, you know, I was awaiting a response from the mayor, and I was driving through Tower Park, and I'm, I'm looking at stuff going, I, you know, we still need to do this, I need to be able to do this, and I'm like, gosh, wouldn't it be awful if I couldn't stay here and do this that long? So, I, I got the call, and I, I couldn't be happier, so I thank everybody.
Yay, yay, awesome. Okay, at this point, we're going to move right along with our meeting, you are welcome to stay for the entire thing, or you can cut out whenever you'd like.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for coming.
Great choice.
Next time I'll come back to the place.
Yeah, okay, okay, I'll hold you to that, Chris. Alright, reports of officers, fire department monthly report, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, members of council, and Mr. Dill, again, it's an honor to give you the monthly report for the Fort Thomas Fire Department this being September that you have received in your packets. I don't have anything to add to the report that you receive, but I've got a couple of things that I wanted to kind of bring you up to date on. As far as grants, we have applied for another grant through the Kentucky Fire Commission for a thermal imager camera, we have a couple of them on the trucks, these are cameras that do a number of things, but can help us find hotspots in buildings and things like that, behind walls, et cetera. They had a grant process, we went through that, I feel comfortable, we received a number of physical fitness equipment things through the fire commission, so I feel very comfortable, hopefully we'll be able to receive this thermal imager camera, which will kind of set us up for more than one on the front-line piece of equipment, that being Engine 601. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, I may have, I mentioned it before, but if not, we did receive a grant through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, again, and, again, very, very proud to be associated with that group, and Lieutenant Webster did a great job in writing that grant, it is for a, a cot loading system, a new cot and a loading system for the back of the ambulance, a couple of departments in northern Kentucky have this, it's for larger patients, it will help basically lower the stress and strain on our employees' backs in lifting patients and putting the cot in, and we were lucky enough to receive a grant from them, and that being in the amount of $35,000. So we actually are going down tomorrow to get that grant started, the process, Lieutenant Webster, Treasurer Ewald and myself are going to go down in the morning, and again, just kind of get that process started with, with COs, and so, again, we're, we're real happy to obviously be, being, being awarded that grant and feel very, very good that that will help our personnel in the long run. So just a couple of things there on the grant process, the other thing I wanted to mention is obviously, you know, we have busy months every year, every month throughout the year, but October is our busiest month, and again, it is, as you well know, Fire Prevention Month. This year's theme is "Here the Beat, Where You Sleep," should be a working smoke detector in every bedroom in your home, we invite and ask people to, to, to look at getting more smoke detectors in their, in their home. Don't wait till November 1st when you change the clocks, go ahead and change your batteries now, it's a good idea to do that, and again, make sure you have a working smoke detector along with an escape plan and a meeting place in the yard and all those things that goes along with fire prevention that we deal with every day. Every day on the calendar, Captain Parker, the Fire Prevention Officer, and all the officers and all the members of the department have tours every day in the fire department this month, it's a busy month, young and old, again, we invite everybody to come in, and we do have a lot of tours going on, so, we're excited about this month, it'll, you know, again, go very quickly, but we'll, again, touch a number of people this month as we go through that and get that point across, so, again, just wanted to point out a couple of things there, I'd be glad to field any questions the council may have in regard to the monthly report and/or anything else that I talked about, and again, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, entertain a motion.
I'm just curious, well, is the new hydraulic apparatus, it'll be lightweight, it's just going to be the new gurney system?
Gurney system and a lift system that puts it into the back of the ambulance.
It'll replace an existing.
Yes, 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 we have a track system now, it's also a lot safer, heaven forbid, in the event of an accident, it's a lot safer piece of equipment as far as stabilizing the patient on the cot in the ambulance in the event of an accident, again, heaven forbid.
I move to receive a file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Alright, police department monthly report, Chief Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Haas and council members, I just wanted to comment and recognize some of our officers that recently went through some training, and on your page, under investigations for September, Detective Roland began his second session of the Kentucky Criminalistics Academy, it was five weeks recently, he also did five weeks last year, so it ultimately ended up being a ten-week course, and recently, he went to Knoxville, Tennessee, to what's called the Body Farm, and something that they do there is they obviously, they study bloodstain patterns amongst several other techniques in curriculum at the Body Farm in itself, and according to Michael, it was one heck of an experience to go through that. Also, it's not in your monthly report, but Chris Goschorn and Brent Munning recently rep, or graduated from the Academy of Police Supervision this past Friday, that was a three-week course, and congratulations to Chris and Brent. And trending-wise, crime-wise, we've been seeing an increase in burglaries within Campbell County on surround, around surrounding cities. Recently, during this past month, we had two burglaries on Rosemont and Patrol and Investigations that did a great job of quickly developing two suspects, and through that, with their interview and evidence, we were able to charge the two in connection with those burglaries. They went to jail, got out, and continued doing what they were doing, and they were later, with our work and working with other detectives in neighboring counties, the subjects were also involved in several burglaries in those counties, and they were charged in those burglaries also, so, it turned out to be a very positive thing. And lastly, I just wanted to comment on the cover pertaining to merchants and music, I just wanted to let everybody know, on the police side of things, things went quite well, as we all know, it was a great day, Debbie Buckley and her, the volunteers did an incredible job, and there was not a lot of problems, large crowd, it was a great crowd, very festive, we had one arrest, but it was outside the park, it was after the event, and the subject was arrested for alcohol intoxication. We had one teenager that kind of got separated from her mother and father towards later evening hours, but we were able to work that out and everything turned out positive, and we had one misunderstanding, and that turned out to be okay, so. Overall, it was a great, great, great night, so, it was very positive, but everybody did a great job. But that's all I have, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
That's an awesome report about, about that concert, just the minor things that occurred, I mean, it, it was a great night, and Debbie did an awesome job, and all the crew, and all the volunteers, and both the police and the fire, and all the extras you brought in, having that presence there, I think, was very helpful, and it looked like people had a great time, I know I did, so, excellent, thanks. Anybody else? Entertain a motion, then.
Move to receive a file.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Now the new city administrators' report.
Well, thank you. On this occasion, come bearing good news, only good news, I think, so, so that's good. First merchant music, what an outstanding evening, and I'll echo what everybody else has already said, police department, fire department, everybody did a great job, Debbie, thank you for everything. Linda chaired, Linda Sloan is in the audience, she chaired the merchant music, great event, great evening, and you see on your agenda, we have reappointing a number of people to the Renaissance Board, so, we didn't overwork them, we didn't scare them off, I think they enjoy it too, so, some of those people are going to be re-upping tonight, so that's good, too. A couple of other items, I noted in the, in the memo, the 2015 capital improvement program, I'm happy to report is on schedule, and in fact, the resurfacing portion is completed, North Fort Thomas, Barnet Ridge, East South Gate Avenue in Arlington are all resurfaced, they crack sealed today, they painted today, so they are done. Riegler, Black Topping was the contractor, they did a great job, they contacted me today, and the best news of all is it's under budget.
Yay!
So, that project went very smoothly, once we got it all the streets from the utility company work, and it is done, so, we're very happy about that. Churchill Drive?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When will it be known that the assessments are?
We, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we have, obviously, a public inspection in order to do special assessments, and we'll need the Public Works Committee to do public inspection, we'll probably schedule that sometime in November, we will not have final numbers, and we do not bill until after the first of the year, so we'll start that process now, but we won't have a full, we should be able to do it before the end of the year, actually, but we will not bill until January for that. The Churchill Drive project, different contractor, and they are also complete, they did the last pour last week, you can still see barricades down there, of course, a portion of that was in Newport, we worked in an agreement with Newport to do the entire street length to Grand Avenue, that, those barricades will come down at the end of this week, so they're also on schedule, not certain that one will be completely under budget, but they did a good job also, we're very happy with the work, today, they have some restoration and other finished work, but essentially, that street will be open for all lanes of traffic by the end of the week. The other good news to report, 11th hour, actually, the VA Homes, we have been working with the contractor, or our developer, our preferred developer, Bluefield Show on that, and I think I've reported in the past that we have a possibility of creating escrow funds to do the abatement work, they are agreeing to front that money that's necessary, establish some parameters that would allow them to recover that upfront money, we just had conversations today with the VA, and they are willing to consider that as a possibility, we would now be drafting a change in our MOA with the VA, but they seem anxious and, and very considerate of the idea that that could work, so we'll be drafting the terms, the methodology, that that would all take place, to make transfers and have standards that apply that everybody knows upfront, that would allow that work to take place, once that work takes place, then of course, we can make a transfer of property. So that was really the biggest threshold issue, we feel like if we can get that one, one paper, that we'll be able to proceed with all the other issues related to the project, costs with our developer, so that's a very positive step forward, and the VA seems very interested in making that happen, so, that's a good report.
Excellent.
That's really all I have, so if anybody has any question on anything else, I'll sort of manifesting those as well.
Is there a positive, that some of the assessments could actually come out less than I anticipated, because we are under budget?
Yes.
It's going to, people are going to get a smaller building.
Yeah, I, I believe so, we don't have the full breakdown on each street, but I think generally speaking, that will be true.
Cool, alright, moving along, old business, targeted tax incentives.
Okay, you have a draft that we left in front of you, that's an updated draft?
Oh.
Yeah, and the information was left in front of you. This program, of course, was brought to council earlier this year, in fact, Law, Labor and License Committee met in April this year, and we have been working with the Northern Kentucky Area Development District to have a draft, so that's what you have in front of you, I know that Jan spent a lot of time reviewing this as well, the draft that you have as opposed to the one that was sent out earlier includes on the first page, if you look at the very bottom, a lot of definitions that would apply, so that's really the significant change or addition that was put in this, as opposed to what you had received previously. So, moving forward, this program is obviously going to need approval of council or consideration of council, I think the last action from this council was to refer it back to committee, so staff is recommending at this time that this draft language be referred to Law, Labor and License Committee for consideration.
And I'd also, I'd also encourage anybody on council who's not on that committee to, you know, send out the notice to everybody on the, on council, so we know when that is, so we can have a discussion about it.
Because I'd sure like to.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, this is good, because we got to the point where now we have something to start with, and we can use, look at it to add or modify or have more discussion about, so, unless, if anybody has any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to refer to the committee.
I'll move to refer to the Law, Labor, License Committee.
Alright, is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye. Awesome, thank you. New business, consideration of interlocal agreement relating to Kentucky Bond Development Corporation.
Okay, in your package, you received copies of an interlocal agreement, this was forwarded for consideration for the city of Fort Thomas on behalf of Saint East Medical Incorporated. They're working with all the jurisdictions where they have locations and facilities, and what this interlocal agreement is, is matching the parties' jurisdiction that have those facilities with an opportunity to them for do, to do Kentucky Bonding Development Corporation through the Kentucky Development, Bond Development Corporation to do an issuance of bonds, essentially, so the, the action is, is being requested for resolution to allow the mayor to authorize signing of that agreement, and what it would basically do is allow the bond issuance, there is no faith or credit expected from the city of Fort Thomas for retiring of that bond, it's really just an interlocal agreement that acknowledges that bonding development company to issue bonds on behalf of Saint East.
The only reason we're being asked is because they're headquartered here.
Correct, anywhere that they have facilities and locations, all the, and I think I mentioned in there as well that, I think, Covington, Edgewood, Florence, Fort Thomas, and Williamstown, and a number of those have already signed on, and others are in the process of, so, it's a, it's a requirement under statute, Jan, if you want to comment on that, but basically, in order to do that, those agreements have to be signed and then given to the Attorney General's office and authorized back and recorded in each county record, so.
We had done this in the past, but was it for Saint East before, or was it for somebody?
We have done some, we did one for St. Luke when they had the children's center in Florence.
That, okay, yeah.
Still a question, why was, why is Fayette and Midway, why, why are those mayors?
This is, this is actually an interlocal, what they do is they set up an interlocal agreement, and then people sign on to that agreement, so there are already a number of cities that are already in this agreement, and they were the initial ones, and once you're part of the interlocal agreement, then you may have a project in your area, then those cities actually ask the corporation to issue the bonds, so there was something down in Midway and Fayette County.
Fayette, they may have charged the corporation, but then.
They started it.
On Florence, other places.
Correct.
Those are more related to the forming of the corporation.
Correct, yes.
Ah, that makes sense.
Saint East, Fayette, that'd be a big one.
Yeah, yeah, really. Okay, we need a motion to accept that, I assume, entertain a motion. Okay, that, that's good enough, okay.
Signing on to the inter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, roll call, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
I'd like to record to show, I recuse myself from this discussion, I've got some conflicts, I actually drafted that agreement, I, I don't know that that's necessarily a conflict, I mean, but we do work for the Kentucky League of Cities, also on the St. Elizabeth Board, and so that wouldn't be a conflict, it's been in St. Elizabeth, so I'd like to record to just show that I recuse myself from this discussion.
Aye.
And Mr. Meyer?
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next new business, consideration request to lease the daycare building in Tower Park.
Hey, you know, we served, received a letter from, I'm trying to find it, there you go, thank you, Kids and Cribs, Early Childhood and Enrichment Center, they have a location on Alexandria Pike is their main center, and they have other centers, they approached us with a request to lease the daycare building, that's how we refer to it, it was previously used as a daycare, I think way back when, it maybe had different uses, and I don't even know the exact history, but I think there was a weigh station there, maybe some, some gasoline dispensing that went on around that area when it was an RV reserve center, but since the city's owned it, we have used it and leased it as a daycare multiple times, including most recently with Kids and Cribs. However, most recently, they vacated the premises in about 2007, when we remodeled the police department here, we had a lot of displaced storage, and it ended up in the daycare going. We also did our central distribution there of all our consumable supplies for all our buildings in the city, we've since relocated most of that material, we do that out of the Armory Building for a number of reasons, including security and availability of receiving our supply, because we have people at that location during the day, some of our long-term filings can be relocated there as well, so making the building available. We've explained that it's not, you know, long-term intended use, they understand that, if you read their letter, their concept really goes in line with some of the things we've been working on in the rec department, in terms of matching our seniors group and expanding some of the offerings with our seniors group, kind of hitting some of the other age groups with activities, pairing those together, and you can see from, from their text that that's kind of the focus of where they want to be, so we'd like to provide that opportunity, knowing that it's not long-term, they understand that, they've asked for a one-year lease, and there's some terms in there that we've kind of negotiated with them for a reasonable rate for a lease, and we're requesting at the staff level to allow the mayor to go ahead and authorize signing a lease with this group for the terms indicated.
Entertain a motion to that effect?
I should to approve.
That's good enough. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Diesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. New business, consideration of request to lease the daycare building in Tower Park.
Hey, we received a letter from, I'm trying to find it. There you go, thank you. Kids and Cribs Early Childhood and Enrichment Center. They have a location on Alexandria Pike is their main center, and they have other centers. They approached us with a request to lease the daycare building. That's how we refer to it. It was previously used as a daycare. I think way back when, it maybe had different uses, and I don't even know the exact history, but I think there was a weigh station there, maybe some gasoline dispensing that went on around that area when it was an Army Reserve Center. But since the city's owned it, we have used it and leased it as a daycare multiple times, including most recently with Kids and Cribs. However, most recently, they vacated the premises in about 2007. When we remodeled the Police Department here, we had a lot of displaced storage, and it ended up in the daycare going. We also did our central distribution there of all our consumable supplies for all our buildings in the city. We've since relocated most of that material. We do that out of the Armory Building for a number of reasons, including security and availability of receiving our supply because we have people at that location during the day. Some of our long-term filing can be relocated there as well, so making the building available. We've explained that it's not, you know, long-term intended use. They understand that. If you read their letter, their concept really goes in line with some of the things we've been working on in the Rec Department in terms of matching our seniors group and expanding some of the offerings with our seniors group, kind of hitting some of the other age groups with activities, pairing those together. And you can see from their text that that's kind of the focus of where they want to be. So, we'd like to provide that opportunity, knowing that it's not long-term. They understand that. They've asked for a one-year lease, and there's some terms in there that we've kind of negotiated with them for a reasonable rate for a lease. And we're requesting at the staff level to allow the mayor to go ahead and authorize signing a lease with this group from the terms indicated.
Entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
That's good enough.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I understand. HBAC, I mean, what's our investment going to be to get it up to speed for now?
That's a great question. The building has, again, it was previously used as a daycare. It's a very small space, but it is accommodated with the sinks and the exiting. And we're gonna open one exit to provide an outside space area that they'll have and are required to have by state standards. The HBAC is independent, but we'll probably put a split unit in, and it's like $1,500 to put a split unit that will do heating in there, because it had, it has baseboard heating, electric baseboard heating, which we'll probably remove, and they used window air conditioner units, which by providing a split unit in there, they'll do that.
Many splits only go so low as far as the temperature goes. They're meant to supplement an existing heating system, I thought?
No, I think that's small enough space that we'll be able to do with one of the new splits, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Diesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Is there other new business? Would someone like to make a motion about something in the future, like a committee meeting or something?
The executive session, or no? No, I'm sorry.
Maybe a brainstorming session?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Good job, Adam. All right, he wins.
So, we've maybe kicked around the idea of having kind of a brainstorming session for, I guess, just any good ideas that we can think of for the city and where we want to go in our, in our city plan in the next several years. So, in order to do that, we have to, I guess, have a special meeting, or what do we need to do?
Move for a committee of the whole, is that right?
Yeah.
Move for a committee of the whole to entertain strategic plans for the future of the city.
That sounds good.
What do you say?
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion?
There is discussion, and that, please give us direction on exactly when you would like to hold that meeting. I'm assuming we'll schedule Law, Labor, and License in advance of our next council meeting. So, would you be looking at a date other than the next council meeting for that to take place?
I was kind of hoping before the next council meeting, just because I'm excited about it, I want to get started, so.
We could do it early. We could do both, we could do like a five and a six.
That's, that's fine, I mean, we can, I mean, if the council can commit.
Well, I mean, do you have to, do we need to leave time for our new city manager to come up to speed with what's going on here at the city?
No, he's pretty up to speed with all that. Got your mind, have to set him up.
But it does take time to prepare for something like this, and we're talking about strategic planning, you know?
Well, at the, at the first meeting, we're talking about just basically a brainstorming session.
Real more topic-oriented.
And then that'll, in preparation for, after the first of the year, getting into some planning. So, would everybody be available to do both that night at, what time? 5:30, maybe?
What time will that be?
Next council meeting.
The next council meeting Monday, the.
November 16th, I believe.
Yeah, if we did 5:30.
Well, how long, yeah, how long's the other meeting gonna take?
We could do the Law, Labor, and License first, since only three of us would need to be there. Of course, others may want to attend, but.
That's a good idea. Start with that one. Can you all do 5:30, and then do the next one, you know, at 6:15? And if we need more time, we can obviously, we could take up another Monday night. I mean, that was part of the thought behind eliminating Monday night, except I'm gonna be gone the first Monday in November, and I want to be there, so. Is that good with everybody?
Yes.
How's that, that work?
That works for staff, certainly.
Awesome, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Diesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Good job, thanks. Finance Committee reports on disbursements.
Report of disbursements, September 22nd through October 19th, 2015. General Fund, $287,079.34. Tower Park Fund, $740.56. Public Works Pay-Off Fund, $86,817.98. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $15,278.72. CBD Revitalization, $114,307.47. Waste Fees, $70,935. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,871.23. Total, $577,030.30. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants number 300861 through 301036 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, chairperson, Mr. Peterman, member, Ms. Kelly, member.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Diesel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.